Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting of the board then to order to address the two right, left, and off the side there. Title will be, who's going to roll?
Robert Colman.
Here.
James Rooney.
Present.
William Ball.
Here.
Krista Barringer.
Here.
Christine Bellerota.
Here.
Susan Gates.
Here.
Raymond McClary. Scott Volstein.
Here.
Timothy Wells.
Here.
Please rise for the pledge. I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the October 11th, 2022 meeting. So, movement is raised or seconded. Seconded by Miss Cane. Discussion. Doesn't mean her else will propose a vote. It's a fair decision.
Aye.
Student rep report, Mr. Harper.
Um, first Senator Hinche has nominated a Sagari senior for the Presidential Scholar Program.
Is that on me?
Sen- okay. Senator Hinche has nominated a Sagari senior for the Presidential Scholar Program. Sean Tugan has been nominated for this honor. He was one of two students nominated out of all of our district schools. The first edition of the school newspaper has been released and can be found on the school website. Anything goes, juniors first seniors will be held on Thursday for the first time since pre-COVID. Cabaret was also held last Friday since the first time pre-COVID. Star party is coming up and the student free store will now be open, which is open to any students who are in need of food for different necessities. That's all.
Thank you. Mr. Reinhardt, care of the good.
Thank you very much. Just want to ask Mr. Zarela to give us an update on our ball sports. So both varsity boys and girls both qualified for section play this year. Varsity girls tennis, Amy Hoyt qualified for section in singles and Chloe Turner and Jillian Mills for doubles. Varsity golf, Arrow Berendino qualified for section play. And our cheer squad attended a regional competition and took second place overall and won the most spirited category. This is a quote from Coach Zarela. Coach McCag and Coach Whitaker have both built the program with both effort and determination. So considering with COVID and everything, it was just great to see all of our sports back out this year and for them to be so successful. I think all the coaches and the athletes and all their parents for supporting them.
Thank you, Mr. Reinhardt. Dr. Kaplan.
Hello. This is Kayla Lamb and she is a school psychologist for us and she's also an administrative intern for me. So she's actually helping out with this presentation. Just wanted to start off with preschool, just to let you know we're, we've been hovering around 80 students right now. Two left, but another one is starting on Monday and we have another parent who's coming to visit next week. So it looks like we're going to be back up to 80. And hopefully we'll have Anderson starting in the other two classes. The kids are great. We have, we now have no one crying in the morning. The first, the first week was a little tough. We had one little boy who's just like screaming, "I love you mom," like for a long time. And then she started having the grandpa drop him off. That ended. So, you know, they're really enthusiastic. They, they love our custodian. They see them in the hall and they're like yelling, "Kevin!" And we had the fire company come, which thank goodness because the first fire drill, I had a group of boys tell me that it wasn't really a fire drill because there were no trucks. And, but the kids, they've, they've done really well with the drill thing now. Don't cover their ears anymore. If you get a chance to walk down, they have a lot of science that they've been working on, like the pumpkin cycle. And they've been doing math where they're picking their favorite apples. And we're having a art show on Thursday. Right now we have 180 people signed up to come. So the kids were real excited that they got to do their own art show. And then if you get a chance, Kevin, our custodian, also has his art here. And the kids, we took them on like on a tour. We had it in the room and they thought they were going to a real art show. It was, it was really cute. So we're just going to start on what we have for pupil personnel services and all of the services that we're providing right now.
So I'm just curious, do you have this PowerPoint in front of you? Do you have any mail or anything? Paper copy? Oh, perfect. All right. So for related services, you could go to the next slide. For related services, we have currently three OTs. We were at two, we need that one more. When I get into the numbers, I think you'll see why. For RCPC, we have two social workers, one at the elementary, one at the junior high, with three classrooms and clinic. School psychologists, there's one at Cahill, one at Middleway and Morse, one at Riccardi and Woodstock. Those two psychologists share. We do have students in the private schools. One at the junior high for the grade seven through nine, one at the high school for 10 through 12, and then myself, who's the chairperson, but I also do all the out of district testing, which is a lot, but it's good to see the kids. For physical therapists, we have one, and then we also contract one through Bozies. Social workers, we have one at Cahill, one at Morse, one at Riccardi, one at the junior high, and then one at the high school. One at the high school also does McKinney-Bento, which is in the staffs later. And then finally, for speech therapists, Cahill has one, Morse, Riccardi, Woodstock, Middleway. So everybody is covered. It's nice to have staff member in every building, somebody you can go to. All right, next slide. For OT, I put the numbers for 2021 and 2022, and then I looked at this year as well. You'll see that through Mount Marian being repurposed, the numbers at Cahill and Morse specifically have increased. And you might see a decrease or stay the same in Riccardi as the special classes there have moved buildings as well. So overall, if you look at the total number for OT, it kind of stayed the same. We're seeing the same numbers there, but I do want to let you know that all the numbers you see here reflect the students. They don't reflect the frequency. So 46 students at Cahill receive OT, but some get it two or three times per week or cycle. This also doesn't reflect RTI services. So more students than you're seeing here are getting serviced. And then finally, this does include 504 and specialized students, so they're all accounted for. For physical therapy, we see a slight increase, but nothing alarming, nothing huge. We don't have any out of district physical therapy needs at this time. So all of the physical therapy needs are coming from in district. For counseling services, comparing last year to this year, it looks pretty similar. Slight increase. It's not surprising now that we have mental health support and staff and SEL push in every building. But given the pandemic, our focus really shifted from specialized students who need counseling to the whole building. Everybody needs support. This also, this number does not reflect emergency or as needed counseling that occurs on a daily, on a daily basis. And then finally, speech and language therapy. Overall, we see a slight decrease. This could be accounted for declassification, students meeting goals, students just going from maybe classified to an as needed basis, but still nothing concerning.
So the RCPC clinic, I think we said before, we have classes, the younger class right now is at four, but there are some referrals that are possibly going through. And the upper class has seven students in it. There is a clinic that also services non-specialized students and specialized, and that's housed in Cahill downstairs. The next slide is home school, home tutoring, TTP, which is a temporary treatment plan that's here at Mount Marian. And then hospitalization. So hospitalizations would be somebody either at Four Winds or Benedictine. And we still, you know, have to make sure that they're getting instruction. So you can see, these, these change briefly too. So, you know, somebody would be home training, then they're hospitalized, then they're back home. homeschooling, we did see an increase for elementary. But we have brought, some of the kids have been coming back that were out for COVID. Next slide. Guidance, you can see the breakdown. So we have some of the guidance going to the elementary schools and they have a schedule that they've worked out with the principals there. And we also have a ninth grade, ninth grade and E&amp;L. That's been really well received with the students, that they have somebody who speaks Spanish and, you know, they can go to her. She's also teaching. So she has some sections of that. Next slide. Health services, we have a nurse at every school right now. We do still have one here at Mount Marian and that services the preschool and Bozies' needs for medication. And we do have one at Middleway that is under us. The one at Woodstock Day, she is not, she no longer is a, she, she, we don't pay her, but she does still consult with a lot of our nurses. The last thing here, COVID tracking. So we're still doing it. Thank goodness it's not as bad as it was. You can see September, we have to go by, this is, people actually reported it to us. So we had 57 altogether for September and we were at 29 in October. And then I have just the total positive, whether it's students, teachers, or staff. Most of the time it's students. But like I said, sometimes we don't know about it and then the county contacts me and says, "Oh, do you know you have an active person?" And we don't. So then we try to like track it down. So it's a little bit harder in that sense to really have a good idea of what we really have. But it's the same thing with, you know, town. So with all the home tests, although it's great, and people are picking them up all the time, they're not necessarily reporting it. They might keep their kid home, but they're not, you know, not, they're not always sending it into, to the county. Next slide is ELL. And that just is the breakdown of how many students in each building, Cahill, Junior High, we do have one also in Morse that I see did not get put on here. So that number has kind of stayed the same. And the languages that we're seeing, you can see all, we have English, Spanish, Nepali, Thai, Punjabi, and Chinese. So those people are busy right now. We just, we just started Rosetta Stone and the students are getting logged on to that. And the hope is with, with our licenses that the parents can also log on. So they'll actually get English automatically. They get that. So hopefully the parents could use it too at home for English while the kids are using the Spanish to English. And then McKinney-Bento, which is our homeless population, 35 students all together. That's about what we were at last year. Thirty-four of them are doubled up. So only one of them right now is at a hotel. That's better because they're usually with family or friends. But, you know, there's still a lot of need there. We have three preschool students that are doubled up. And, you know, luckily we've had gift cards and people are pretty good about letting us know if they need things. So that's it. Do you have any questions?
As for the counseling, the case that you listed, who's doing the counseling?
The counseling for which?
The IP counseling. Are you using social workers and psychologists?
We use social workers and psychologists. So a lot of times it's the social workers, but if a student has made a connection with one of the psychologists, we would still do that. But I would say for the most part, it is the social workers.
Does RCPC still work with the New York City psychiatrists?
Yes. Right now they only have one. So it's a good program. I, I just think that, you know, while we're, we're looking at, we're involved with Ulster County and they're doing an incentive for more mental health. So they're working with the South. And so they're actually setting up programs with Kingston and we're with Antioch. And they will come into the, they're targeting junior high. And they're just trying to get, you know, some resources to families that haven't been able to get in a program.
Well, actually, you just answered my question I was asking about the Ulster County pilot that was coming out and how it might.
Yeah. So we're involved with that. It's still in its like beginning stages, but we've been meeting monthly.
Twice a month. Twice a month.
So my question was just kind of three boarding offices and probably really identical. Have they, has RCPC been able to staff consistently for the services?
They have. We finally have one for each of the classes. Last year towards the end, we had both, all three actually left us, the social workers. One was, they didn't get vaccinated, so we couldn't keep them. And then the other two actually were hired by school districts. So they were struggling. So we picked up, when some of our social workers started picking up, like just seeing kids, but it was, they were, they were afraid they weren't going to get anybody for a long time there.
And I think my reason for asking is similar, you know, having some familiarity with the program and the challenges they have. So that's, it's good to hear. Thank you.
And they actually did two professional development workshops today for us, so that was well.
Sorry, can you just name RCPC?
Oh, sorry. Rockland County Psychiatric Center. So we have a, a contract with them. They come in, we don't pay them. They just work off of the parents' insurance. And they supply a psychiatric social worker and psychiatrist. And a lot of the children are on meds, so they have to have the psychiatrist to get that.
And are they all in separate classrooms or is it?
They, they have, they have separate classrooms. So they're, are they eight one twos in there?
The younger ones in eight one two, and then the older ones are twelve one two, and then the junior highs are twelve one two.
So that's 12 students, one teacher, two TAs. Thank you.
Next up is the public recognition. I'm going to address the board. Who's supposed to come in?
Ms. Trump.
I'm going to take a round of my line. My, I'm going to run it. I've come to you this evening to talk about field trips, specifically field trips and education. Asking the educator, parent, or anyone who interacts with children on a daily basis, how you best connect with kids. My bet, that that, their government ends up with the same game. We all know the value that field trips provide, connecting with your textbook to real life experience and making memories to be given to all throughout their entire life. You can imagine my excitement when my daughter came home last week with commercials set to see a play to close out her class in the unit on Mexico. But then- But then, at the bottom, I request a $5 to help cover transportation costs. Puzzled by the male teacher, I received a swift response. Imagine my surprise and different car, that each grade level is on the ground one free field trip a year. What is this guy? So I scoured the district website and scrolled over the district's policy manual, and nothing stated that there's only one free bus per grade level. Anyway. So I decided to contact the transportation department, calling to find their email address kicked back from the deliverable. When I called them the following morning, I was told that they could not answer my questions and directed to James Nathan Moore. I received a quick reply from James, but not all of my questions or my request for a copy of the contact between the district and transportation company were answered or acknowledged. I have been told that the slip requesting transportation money went out in error. But I stand firm in belief that this was a miscommunication on our administration side far before the error of asking parents to pay for school bucks was made. Last year's budget showed six line items for contract transportation field trips. For four elementary buildings in Junior and Senior High, $12,35,000. Want to take a guess at how much of that budget amount was actually used? $592.80. That means that the unused $34,407.20 was absorbed into the general fund. Correct? These five items are staying for this school year, minus the line at Mount Marion. With so much unused field trip transportation money from last year along with this year's budgeted amount, not a single teacher should be put in a position where they are asking parents to pay for buses while using the school bus. These three handed out the $5 that was requested, but then our teachers are told that they only get one grade level field trip above each year. At the current budget of $5,000 per elementary building, surely that can cover more than seven buses, especially considering that the $156 that Mount Marion used last year covered three trips. One to Alcatraz, one to the New York State Museum, and one to the Mall of Art. Last year, the Board of Ed and the district administration have set a very clear and very concise set of rules or guidelines regarding field trip transportation. Our teachers should not be worried about taking more than one to a year or sit there at night trying to decide which trip would benefit their students the most, since they only get one. Our district does not fund field trips or assemblies. And the current policy of having the teachers ask either the parents or the TTA to cover the transportation cost for about a single free bus goes against the equity that this administration has tutored the last two years. Our teachers and our students deserve more than one trip. If the funds are there, please make sure our teachers know.
Hello? Good evening. My name is Becky Melford. I live at 23 Blue Mountain Road, Sargertys. Thank you for allowing for the public comment at the Board of Education meetings. It is very much appreciated. I'd like to begin by thanking the organizers and presenters that devoted their time and energy to a very productive professional development day. Educators throughout the district were asked to come to today's session with an open mind and an open heart. Many of them did. As you may or may not be aware, our school's climates have been on shaky ground for the last year or so. In my 28 years in the district, I can only recall one other time when I've seen so many of my usually exuberant colleagues so weary, downtrodden, for such an extended period of time. We are practicing self-care, infusing SEL lessons into our lesson plans for ourselves and our students. And we are reminding ourselves that we are strong and resilient, just like our students. Today's sessions fostered camaraderie between old schools and new schools, engaging learning, and sparks of excitement to try something new with our students when we are back in session with them. I do have a request that I'm bringing to the podium this evening. Beginning in September, several of my colleagues and I inquired about the New York State ELA and math tests that are given by each district in the state every spring. We had asked about the opportunity to have an open discussion about the pros and cons of computer-based tests compared to paper-based tests for our youngest learners. The State Education Department has a plan to phase in computer-based tests for all students, grades three through eight, between the years of 2024 and 2026. We know a lot can change with the state in three years, but that's the current plan. I was appreciative that Mr. Tolman mentioned at the last board meeting that he and others would be attending a meeting with Commissioner Rosa on November 2nd. He suggested that if we had questions, concerns, or big ideas, that we could reach out to him. I did take that opportunity to reach out to him and other board members via email with some details regarding concerns that my colleagues, district parents, and community members have discussed regarding computer-based tests for our youngest learners. When we begin each faculty meeting, we take a moment to go over the norms of the meeting. We agree to honor each other's time, to be present, and to be student-focused. That third one, be student-focused, is why all of us are here, involved in the district in one capacity or another. That is why I'm here this evening. In advocating for open discussion, I have used the chain of command, our ELA and math coaches, our lead teachers, STA representatives, and my principal. I was trying to be optimistic that maybe, since the elementary buildings were all in the same place today, that someone would take a few minutes to ask for our feedback about the state tests. As teachers responsible for administering these high-stake tests, we have valuable information to offer. Some of our teachers can even offer a dual perspective as an educator and as a parent of a test taker. The opportunity for discussion turned out to not be part of today's agenda. As a district that is taking time to focus on our goals, I would like to reiterate this one. The Sargertys Central School District will cultivate collaboration, celebration, and communication between the school and community to nurture positive partnerships between the Board of Education, administration, staff, and the community. Bullet points for this goal include promoting transparency, practice shared decision-making, cultivate grassroots input, enhance communication between community members and the staff. Since September, an open discussion about the advantages and disadvantages of computer-based testing for our youngest learners has been on the back burner, or perhaps still in the freezer. According to the State Education Department timeline, building principals need to request or modify their request for the mode of assessment by December 9th. Hence, the timeliness of this matter. I'm asking that there be an opportunity for various stakeholders to take, to have an opportunity to practice shared decision-making. I'm asking that there is a transparent process to making a final decision regarding how the test will be administered to our youngest learners. I'm asking for an atmosphere where communication is cultivated and celebrated, because sadly, I'm concerned that the excitement of today's learning will quickly fade as my colleagues go back to their rooms, back to the day-to-day routines, back to the feeling of being afraid to speak up, because they have seen that making waves does not bode well. Let's ride on the wings of the energy that today fostered and have an open conversation about this computer-based test, about computer-based tests versus paper-based tests. Let's remember the norm, be student-focused. And of course, let's ask ourselves, what's best for kids? I thank you for your time, and I apologize that I will be dashing out, because I have a presentation to give about nature deficit disorder. I will continue to watch the meetings, and I truly appreciate that they are available online. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Good evening, thank you. I want to talk a little bit today. I did some, I did a lot of data study. One of the outcomes of a lot of our study with our de-registering last year was the inconsistency of class size across the district. We had classes that were large, we had classes that were small. But one of the other goals of the board was obviously to do everything we can to maintain class size. So this first chart is that's all of our classes as of the beginning of October last year. And the second row is our class size for all of the sections this year. So to make it a little bit clearer, next slide, Dan. So that first chart on the left is, as you can see, the discrepancies of kindergarten in 2021. As you can see, the classes are a little bit more comparable in 2022. Next slide, you can see the same thing in first grade. We have lots, we have smaller classes, much larger classes. And this year, as you can see, the classes are much closer together in size. Same thing with second grade, much closer, third. Go ahead to fourth, Dan. Fourth grade is probably our closest, fifth, and sixth. And as you can see, last year, that was one of the major concerns. Those two large classes were at Morse last year. They were at 28, 29. And we have the other classes in the district in sixth grade at 17 and 18. And as you can see this year, they're much more balanced out. Next slide is, the red is this year, the blue is last year, that's tough to read. So if you look at the next chart, you can actually see, the left is all of our class sections. As you can see, a lot of ebb and flow in class size. And if you look at the right, that's this year, much more comparable class size across the entire district. Excuse me, in the chart, it says the most. If you look at 2021, you know, there was a lot of talk about kindergarten and classes being 30 last year, which would never happen. Last year, our average class size in October was 19.1. This year, across the district, it's 19.91, which is still very small for a public school in New York State, below 20. Last year, our smallest class was 12, but our largest class was 29. This year, our smallest class is 15, our largest class is 24. Last year, our standard deviation was 3.82. That's a number that tells you how far you are from the norm or the average. So that's kind of high. This year, we dropped that down to 2.66. So not only did we maintain class size of less than 20 throughout the district, but the disparity, disparity in class size is much closer. So we don't have these classes of 12 and 29. The last number is very significant. Last year, we had five sections that had 25 students or more. This year, we have zero. So, you know, one of the main goals of, you know, the de-registering, obviously, was to make us physically responsible, meet the needs of our students, maintain and add programming. And you saw by the great PowerPoint from Dr. Capley, the amount of SEL support we've added, now having a social worker in every building. But we were also able to balance out our class size across the district. And we don't have, you know, these large classes. Our largest class is 24, and we are still able to maintain an average less than 20. I know it's a lot of data, but I like the data, so. Any questions on that? Yes, Ms. Barrosa?
So one of the questions I have is how did the special permission request impact the class size equity? Specifically, were families denied special permissions prior to the start of the school year to achieve these results?
I'm not sure of the question, but as, before Bed Day, everybody that had requested a special permission was granted that option. Those numbers you saw right there, I did that, that chart on April 21st, I mean, October 21st.
Right, but families received after the start of the school year their special permission?
Yeah, there was a few still left that we still granted, yes.
Okay, but they were missionally denied?
They were denied in June. My goal in June was to maintain two seats in every section, so we'd have room when the school year started.
Okay, so I guess, from my point of view, I think as a district, we probably need to discuss what the intention of class, of special permissions is. Because I understand it to be a daycare policy and not to balance class sizes. I mean, specifically, the letter that goes out to families says that it would be contingent on having the school district spend additional money, so if we're going to go over and above your class size. So to be using this policy to balance class sizes, I think we as a district need to know, you know, discuss whether that's how we want to do, use this policy going forward, or, you know, make a spreadsheet look good, to be honest, in my opinion.
Okay, well, the goal of this was not for me to make a spreadsheet look good. The goal in June was to leave two seats in every single section, so in case we had movement over the summer. I did not use the policy to deter people. I used the policy to make sure we had room, so we weren't over in September. That was the main goal.
But that, that goes against what families are trying to do, right? They need to make childcare arrangements before the start of the school year.
That's why the letters went out in June.
And then you're told in October that, oh, you can now go to another school and make rearrangements for your child here.
We, we awarded families who still needed the option, if they were still required once we had the room. But the goal was to make sure we had the room before we left for the summer.
Okay. Another question I have was that, in understanding that enrollment is extremely fluid, and this presentation had to be done at a point in time, but as of the recent data, can you confirm that now the second grade at Cahill only has 50 students?
Yes, that's correct, as of today.
So a month ago, we had to approve adding a position for one student that was in the district for maybe less than six weeks.
I don't know the exact student that enrolled or unenrolled. I don't know if it was the same student or not.
Right, but the enrollment of the classroom, of the sections in total, did change to go down below what we needed to have a third section.
Yes.
So my question was in regards to the, one of the things that we did when we did the reimagining is to look at all the assets and all the resources across the entire district and to realign
Yes.
our expertise, as well as our, our curriculums. Our, and so we started doing, I believe, some age level activity.
Yeah, we've been, it's been a lot of work, David. The second, right, the second faculty committee of the month is now horizontal grade level meeting.
Really? Okay, yeah. And so we're seeing that, so when we, when we look at the pretty graphs, it's not just about the class size, it's also about, for, for example, I'm, I'm looking at a kindergarten and what used to be colorful silos of sections are now also, all of those lines are meeting together.
Yes.
Talking together. So as much as there's still individual lines, the other thing that we're not seeing on this graph is the combining of all of, into kindergarten, first grade, second grade.
I mean, our literacy coaches and our math coaches are doing an amazing job, working with our staff. And our staff is very receptive. I think their schedules are full, right, with meeting with the coaches and everything. I mean, that's going to really get us there quicker, as far as consistency across the district.
Exactly.
I mean, that was, you know, one of the major concerns was, is everything that's happening in one building in fourth grade identical to another one?
That's huge. Just wanted to highlight that.
Thank you.
We'll move into board member remarks.
I have a lengthy report. If you don't find indulging me for a good, like, five minutes. I just got back from our New York State Association Conference, three days.
We need to, we need to pause for a second, welcome back our.
That's, I'm good with that, absolutely.
Go ahead, Ms. Barrosa.
Thank, so, so I am coming back a bit excited, and I know Mrs. Melford had to leave. But one of the things that kept hitting me during her presentation was just, you know, how exciting professional development brings us, and how you really hope that it doesn't get put on shelf, that we lose it, and how, you know, you want to keep talking and see if we can do things. I'd also recognize it. Does that mean? Does it mean?
Yeah, it must be that part. Try the transport.
Try this one, yeah. Sorry. Is that better? I moved all my equipment away. Maybe it's the computer, I don't know. I'll stand up to dance, it's gonna be a, a little long. Um, so anyway, so the conference, so coming back from the conference and knowing that things that I did and went to in conference five years ago are only now, I'm seeing it in the district. So also recognizing, I always keep putting on my, things take time, like, I'm going to keep bringing it back, I'm going to keep putting it on the shelf. What are the workshops I went to? And, and some people are going to just go, oh, as soon as I say, they're going to go now. And it's, of course, the early start, the, the early school start time. And people have been talking about that for years. It's still being talked about, and we're still going to see if there's some things we could do, some micro things we're hoping to see. So, but, um, while I was there, some of the really exciting things that I left with. So for those who haven't been to a conference, there's an expo, sort of amazing expo, it's like huge. Everybody is there, all the vendors are there, buses are there. One conference year, I went, my daughter challenged me, she's now a teacher in the district. She challenged me, I said, what do you want me to get at the conference? I was like, I'll see if I can, she said, I want a park. I want a model park. So I came back with turf, I came back with wooden blocks, I came back with a little bus. I came, I came back with a park. So it's amazing what you can get at conferences. But, um, so I, I do have some items that I was hoping to share with our pupil personnel services, as well as some conference materials for our guidance counselor programs. Met with those extensively, had some great ideas, some wonderful things I was hearing about for the future of our guidance. And I know, Damian, if you're listening, I, that was one of the things from our school board pass. It was always talking about our guidance programs. One of those being the Career Exploration Program from ASVAD, I think is the name of it. Totally free, everything about this Career Exploration Program, totally free. We can build it, we can put it right in. Ideally, before the 10th grade kind of activity that could be put into our programming, so that it could help guide our guidance counselors into the future. Again, all free, love that. So, speaking of free, there's a emotional wellness and academic success vendor, Genesis IQ. So excited about this one. I sent, there was a Bosie's representative from Ulster Bosie's there, this assistant superintendent, I made him. Go to, I was like, you need to go talk to them. Again, totally free. This one, all I kept remembering is, and again, it was hearing one of the presentations done out of prior, uh, professional development about the FISFIVE, that is really big in our Sawyeres. This is a program that was developed by a father during COVID, whereby it identifies building-wide, real-time, FISFIVE, how you doing? And it's for students, it's for the teachers, it's for everybody in the building. So literally, the principal could go in at any given time and say, okay, this is what this classroom is looking like. At a high school level, they could walk through and they could find out that, you know, an individual student is starting to, because they can see them through the day of how their day is going, as they keep kind of just checking in throughout the day. Again, 100% free. They also will offer, if you contact them, they will give you these little 988 stickers, completely free, that you can hand out to everybody, that they can put on their badges, to remind everybody of the 988, which is the new national suicide hotline. So, great resources, wanted to bring those back to share. The New York State Association for Pupil Transportation, if we are not a member, and I did ask, they said they weren't sure. I've got the information to become a member of the New York Association for Pupil Transportation. They have some great things, some great resources, about surveys and some really good things. Right, I, I can't give the detail about everything I was talking to them about, but I was really excited about the School Transportation Administrator Mentor Program, was, was that one. And then, the last thing that I was also really excited about was Coalition for Healthy School Food. They had all vegan food, who's all vegetarian? Don't take care of head chip, it was amazing, it was really good. Tasted good, too. But anyway, so again, you know, promoting really healthy food options and getting some good different opportunities in our school buildings. Again, five years, people, tell me, five years, you're going to have tofu in Sawyeres, it's going to happen, so.
Dan will use the lunch.
So, thank you. And that's it, okay.
Anyone else?
Yep. So as we approach the one-year anniversary of the Board of Education vote to close the Mount Marion School, I believe it is incumbent upon all of us at this table to continue to monitor and evaluate the impact of the decision and hold ourselves accountable for the promise that we, promises that we were making, that we made in the community. In a corporate world, there is a widely, uh, account, a widely prevalent concept known as change management. This process can be applied to any organization and is especially relevant to our school district, as it has recently undertaken the most impactful change in decades by closing and repurposing the Mount Marion Elementary School. Although there are many versions of the change management process, the five most common steps include, one, prepare the organization for change. Two, craft a vision and plan for the change. Three, implement the changes. Four, embed changes with the organizational culture and practices. And review, and five, review the progress and analyze results. From my point of view, the district is now in the fifth stage of the change management process. The board began a discussion at the August 16th meeting about the need for establishing metrics to measure how the objectives of the resolution passed in January 2022 have or will be met. I believe those are important conversations and need to continue. Additionally, the district represented three compelling reasons for the actions taken. Fiscal necessity, class size equity, and increased programming at the high school. Last spring, the board took action to approve several new courses at the secondary level in the wake of this decision. I think that both the board and the community would like to hear about the enrollment and the academic success of those new courses. Tonight, the superintendent presented how the deviation in class size at elementary levels has decreased. It's important to recognize that this has required the district to add additional staffing and has impacted decisions for special permission requests. I believe it's imperative to the district that the district also address the number-one headline-grabbing reason for closing Mount Marion. It was widely publicized that the district would save $1.8 million. This savings was crucial to be able to afford the new programming and close the fiscal gap. Critical to performing step five of the change management process, the administration needs to provide an actual savings analysis. It is the board's responsibility, as fiscal stewards of the district, to review the projection versus actual savings. And I'm making a formal request as a trustee of the board that we include this as a regular topic of discussion, especially as we approach the new budget season. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tolman. I just, once again, would like to echo Mr. Reinhardt's sentiments regarding the, the kids participating in the fall sports season. And, you know, we don't oftentimes get the chance to congratulate the kids that are participating in, in other extracurricular activities that are probably a little less prominent and a little less public, but I know that those things are, are going on and underway. And, you know, I'm always thinking about the involvement that, that kids have in the after-school activities and how, how important that is, so I, I just wanted to, to echo that sentiment. I appreciate the fact that our board was able to have earlier in October, a board retreat. I think that, you know, pretty much everybody, including the public, the viewing public recognizes, you know, we have a different composition of a board. Not that you don't sometimes have a different composition every year. But, you know, there are very much some, some nuances and some, some learning, you know, that, that needs to take place and some orienting that needs to take place. And so the effort to put together a retreat was certainly well-received by me. I, I think that the more that this board can continue to witness this guidance, work on, you know, its own organizational structure, its own goal development, similar to the way that we expect, you know, administration and teachers to, to work and develop SMART goals. I think it's, it's very good for a board to do the same thing. And SMART goals certainly would be the, the, the way to go. And I look forward to that work, because I do think that one of the things that is important for any board to do is to set the same standards for themselves that we would set for all of our educators, from the top on down. And that really begins with some goal language, and then providing for, you know, the measurement, so that we can say, as a board, how we feel about our own personal self-efficacy. Are we being effective as a board? And I'm not asking that question right now, it's rhetorical. I think that going forward, it's the kind of work that this board needs to engage, engage in. And I appreciate, albeit, you know, the fact that it was in October, I appreciate that we've taken. But I see it as a very important step. I'm looking forward to more of that, that work as we go forward. I'd also like to simply thank the public that came out to, to sit with us, and those members of the public, as well as at least an employee, one employee, for their participation tonight.
Mr. Holson?
Last party, there was a Stargazing party at the junior senior high up in the grass there. I just wanted to thank the Mid Hudson Astronomical Association, I want to make sure to get that. And the science club and Mrs. Crum for putting that on. There were four volunteers that brought their own telescopes, and kids from all ages from the entire district went. You could see Saturn, you could see the shadow of the ring on Saturn, which is pretty cool. Neptune and four of its moons, and then the moon, which was super bright, which kind of took away from some of the other stars that they were saying. But I just wanted to let everybody know that every new moon, that's when there is no moon, Mid Hudson Astronomical Association invited everybody to come out and take a look at their telescopes. So if you haven't looked at a telescope lately, it was pretty awesome.
I'd like to thank BBS Keaton for hosting us tonight. I thank Dr. Kattler and Ms. Lam for the presentation. Ms. Lam, your plate must be very full, being the chairperson and psychologist and an administrative intern. Bless you. But thank you all, and I think Mrs. Kay for the goodies over there also. On top of trustees, Holson's comment, I hope people saw the lunar eclipse early this morning. That was very exciting. Kudos to our fall athletes. Being a student and being involved in any extracurricular activity is a balancing act. We have many students that are involved in many areas, and I congratulate them. Just being able to balance it all and still be good students. And Krista, I love your enthusiasm. I, I know that, though, after you come back from a conference, you are just pumped up. But you are right, it does take time, and that's why things you saw four or five years ago are what we're seeing now. But I love that enthusiasm that you brought back, so. Thank you, everybody, for coming and for the comments from the public also.
Moving to board president's remarks. I want to thank Ms. Crowder for representing our board at Ulster County School Boards Association. It's really appreciated. I had the intention of going this year, but I have a medical issue with my family that prohibited that. But, you know, your enthusiasm, it's, it's great that you're bringing this stuff back. Hopefully, that enthusiasm is contagious as COVID tonight. Ms. Melford referenced the medical issue on, on number two. And I did, the issue of computer and paper-based testing is, is all over the place. There's a whole bunch of new staff and data. But what came across in the discussion is there's three main areas in New York State. One is just getting staffing, adequate staffing statewide and nationwide, teacher shortage. There's also an administrative shortage that came up with the internship. Safety was number one. I didn't realize that in New York City, their policy is that the doors are open. They can't lock their doors to stop someone from coming in, because they believe in an open-door policy. We've talked about safety here, and it's, you can't have students expected to learn without safety. And transportation, transportation is, there's a shortage of drivers. I don't know how much that affects the field trip piece, but we're certainly trying to find out. It's news to me that you were charged $5 for a field trip, so we're going to get that information, so we can clarify that. The regulation, I believe, is in 2027, we're supposed to have all electric school buses. Well, the electric school buses are problematic. They weigh a third more than a regular school bus. Some of them are, they're six, over 600,000 pounds. They're not weighted for some of the roads that our buses travel on, so that's a mistake, my problem has to be looked at. They have a range of 125 miles, some of our bus runs are over 150 miles. And there's not infrastructure to support that, so I'm sure we'll be hearing that in the coming months about what's happening with that issue. The governor did not release her projected budget for the October 30th deadline. So right now, we have no idea what state aid is going to be, what foundation aid is going to be. And that's cause for concern. When I was up in Hollywood, we found out that the New York State retirement contributions can be somewhere between nine and a half and 10%, which is less than we contributed last year. Not a whole lot less, but less. So there's some cost savings that maybe we can apply to some other areas. And we have some cost savings with the leasing of the building. So in the next couple of months, you're going to be hearing about the financial projections as we find out. And I'm sure some of that's resulted, is going to be as a result of whatever the election results are tonight. As far as the elections, we're blessed to live in a country where we have free and open elections. And part of the reason we have free and open elections in this country is because many of our staff, many of our citizens in Ulster County have served time in the armed forces to keep our country safe and free. School is going to celebrate Veterans Day on November 11th, I believe that's a day off. And I'd like to mention the veterans that we have that work for Sawyeres Central School District. Caleb Berrier was a custodial worker in the Hitler Bank Building. Karen Duke is a teacher at the junior high school. Tony Aaliyah, a retired teacher and soccer coach. Gary Frasky, who's a moderator at Morse Elementary. William Hansbrough, a teacher at Cahill. Jackie Hayes, who is a teacher at Sawyeres High School, has to be on the video list tonight. Karen Crisobanos, secretary at Mount Marion School. Justin McDougall, a teacher at Sawyeres High School. Francis Murphy, a teacher at McCray Elementary School. Arun Mr. Reinhardt, who's a superintendent. Eric Schwartz, guidance counselor at the junior high. Bernard Spirit is a teacher at Sawyeres High School. Jeanne Umbrella, food service helper and retired custodial worker. I'd like to recognize all these individuals tonight, just joining, giving a round of applause. That concludes my remarks. Does the board wish to take a break, or you want to keep going with your journey? All right. Dr. Roback, you got a update for us on the conference today?
Hi, good evening. So this is an informal update. I will certainly give you a more formal update when there's, when it doesn't happen on the same day. So today was amazing. In fact, it was the best day I've had in Sawyeres since I've been hired. We have worked really, really hard at building capacity of our administrative team to take on more professional development. And leading it, today, they were lead learners. Our instructional coaches led really meaningful sessions. So, in a nutshell, when you were planning a superintendent's conference day for teachers, and I've been doing this for 15 years now, it's like planning a wedding. Same amount of logistics, except there's no cocktails, there's no dancing, there's no gifts, and the guests are a little grumpy. So you need to make it meaningful. And today, I think what we experienced was a really incredible, meaningful day. We had the secondary focused on project-based. We had the secondary focused on project-based learning, but with real-world problems, with an authentic audience, focusing on the fact that kindergarten is going to graduate in 2035, which means they will be primed for the workforce in 2045. So what is the world going to look like in 2045? And then we went through Forbes' articles, state, these are the 10 most, these are the 10 top things that they are making for an employee, and a lot of them all come from project-based learning and things we are already doing. So how might we revise what we're doing to include all of those 21st century skills like collaboration, leadership, empathy, cultural diversity and sensitivity, caring for the environment, and the list goes on. Elementary focused on mathematics. They focus on comprehension strategies, and we focus specifically on science and phenomenon-based learning and teaching. Clerical had a session with Heidi Stock. The World Languages had their own session led by SED thematic units. The second session after PBL for the secondary was really, really exemplary. What happened was we had an unconference. And what that means is the teachers were able to choose who they wanted to go to Akali to hear how they did a project. So I just want to recognize our 10 teachers who stepped up, and this is what we want. We want teachers teaching teachers. And then I invited two teachers from P Tech because they live, breathe, and do this every single day so that our teachers could hear the Walk in Their Shoes project, which is so amazing. So Scott Wickham, Jackie Hayes, Chelsea Dafino. And Chelsea Dafino helped me facilitate today. She's my intern. She did an amazing job. James Fetscho, Denise Ortleve, Allison DeCico, Mike Cooper, Leanne.
O'Neill.
O'Neill, thank you. Leanne O'Neill. Sarah Ilya and Sue, the learning.
McManical.
Sue McManical, thank you. And then Matt McFagin and Steve Masson came from P Tech. The behind-the-scenes support was amazing. Secretarial staff, amazing. Custodial staff, amazing. Rocco, Andrea, and Brandon with their technology support, amazing. So I'm super, super excited about this day. I have a stack of feedback sheets that goes through and halfway through. The feedback has been very positive. One of our veteran teachers said, in 16 years, this is the best day she's had. Awesome. Thank you. And I'll share more in detail.
Is Heidi Stock, Heidi Rock, exactly?
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you. That's my thought.
I will entertain a motion to approve personnel items K1, 2, 3, A, B, C, and D. Move by Mrs. Gage, is her second. Second by Mr. Holson, discussion. None being heard, I'll call for a vote, also fair to say aye.
Aye.
I will entertain a motion for K3E. Motion by Mr. Bellaros, is her second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Wells, discussion.
Just very quickly.
Go ahead.
I ask this to be polled because I have to abstain only because I'm related to one of them. That's all.
So tell us if it will be a roll call vote?
Yes.
James Booty?
Yes.
William Ball?
Yes.
Christine Velarosa?
Yes.
Susan Gay?
Yes.
Raymond LaClary?
Yes.
Scott Holson?
Yes.
Timothy Wells?
Yes.
J F, want to abstain, most of the carries.
Thank you. I want to entertain a motion for KFGHI. So move by Mr. Booty, is her second. Second by Mr. Wall, discussion. None being heard, I'll call for a vote, also fair to say aye.
Aye.
I'll entertain a motion for L1, 2, 3. Move by Mr. Holson, is her second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Mooney, discussion. None being heard, I'll call for a vote, also fair to say aye.
Aye.
Business office recommendation, I'll entertain a motion for Friday, is L1, 2, 3. Move by Mr. Mooney, is her second. Mrs. Gage, discussion. None being heard, I'll call for a vote, also fair to say aye.
Aye.
Board action discussion, I'll entertain a motion for Friday, is N1, 2, 3, 4, 5, and 6.
Second.
Move by Mrs. Gage, second by Mr. Mooney, any discussion?
Discussion.
Go ahead.
I just, I think it's great, the junior high choir club. I think, you know, you're not going to please everybody all the time, but I think bringing back stuff that has been missing from Soggy's for so long is, you know, one of the goals of the board and definitely one of the things that I hold to do. And I just think it's wonderful that these people are stepping up. This is an awesome opportunity for our students.
And Mrs. Gage?
Just like I said, we have finally got the Anderson, the thing that's on here. It's going to come up here later, soon.
What was it?
Same, I just, you know, having the Anderson Center for Artism in here now pretty much fully, almost fully occupies this Mount Marion building at this point. And one thing that I've asked for as well is that, you know, now that the building is, you know, fully occupied, that we, you know, look at what the total revenue is that, you know, this building is bringing in for the district and knowing that the district really can't make money off of, or earn a profit off of any lease revenue, that we also look at the cost of operating Mount Marion and make sure that, you know, we are covering our costs or, you know, where we are with the cost versus revenue coming in on this agreement of all of the benefits over Mount Marion.
Mr. Wells? All right, I'll call for a vote, also fair to say aye.
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 Intervene a motion for N7, the Unlimited Soggy Central School District's 403 retirement plan. Mr. Bellaros, a motion is her second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Wall, discussion. None being heard, I'll call for a vote, also fair to say aye.
Aye.
I'll call for a motion for L1, 8, 9, and 10. Move by Mr. Holson, is her second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Mooney, discussion. None being heard, I'll call for a vote, also fair to say aye.
Aye.
Committee report, thought committee?
No report. Sorry. No, it was me.
Okay, a little more to follow with the break. Facilities, Mr. Mooney?
Everything is moving along swimmingly. We, the interface has been corrected with our heating, and our next meeting is December 7th. God, that beat sounds familiar, don't it? To our veterans, thank you. At Fort Huron, and it will be at the media center in the library. Thank you.
Policy committee? We met, you saw the policies that were in here. Do we have a date for our next policy committee meeting?
First Tuesday.
Public recognition, any member of the public wishing to approach the board, please approach the committee. None being heard, I'll entertain a motion to recess into a separate session. Move by Mrs. Gage, is her second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Wells, discussion. None being heard, I'll call for a vote, also fair to say aye.
Aye.
Thank you for coming out today. We will come out to adjourn the meeting, but we are going to stay on going on the agenda. Thank you for coming out today. We will come out to the meeting, but we ought to spend more than an hour or so.
Yeah.
I do. I have some money.
It's easy.
Yeah, yeah. So it's fifty five.
Give him a second.
Do you take them down here?
I'm waiting for Chris to come back out.
You good? I will entertain a motion to come out of executive session. Don't move. Is there a second? Second by Ms. Gage. I will entertain a motion to approve items K, J, K and L. Second by Mr. Postle, second by Mr. Rooney. Any discussion? Again, I apologize for inadvertently leaving those items off. I'll call for a vote. Also, if you say aye.
Aye.
And I will entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Don't move.
Mr. Ball is our second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Wells. Any discussion? I would encourage also if you say aye.
Aye.
Safe travels.
Thank you.